It takes about 30 seconds or so for it to start recording so people can be viewing it. Okay, we're live.
Shall we stand for a few minutes, maybe your time of attention to things that are higher value, and after that, we'll be having the pleasurable legions. I pledge allegiance to the republic of America.
America. For what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To. Thank you. We have a roll call vote at this time. Goldschmidt, Vick Urbani, here. Casey Newton.
Here.
Thank you. Steve Yoder.
Here.
Thank you. Melvin Black.
Yes, here.
Thank you. Gail Carstens.
Here.
Thank you. Dan Hubbell.
Here.
Thank you. Melinda Lautner.
Present.
Yes, she's.
Thank you. David McCullough. Robert Miller.
Here.
Thank you. Tom Nixon.
Here.
Thank you. Eric Winkelman.
Present.
You're Zooming, Eric?
Did you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We can hear him, we just can't see him.
You can't see me, and I don't know how to do that. I'm the mysterious participant.
Okay, so we have, except for half a person, we have the courtroom, and more than necessary, we're all here. If we have an agenda, I'd like to insert another item on our new business, and it'd be following the rezoning request. Item B, nominations. Nominations.
Appointments?
Yeah, appointments.
Are you making that C? You have a B already.
I'm gonna suggest.
It'll be C.
It'll be, in order, purported to be B.
Okay.
And then the goals will be C.
Oh, okay.
Who's that, Eric? Thank you, Eric. And then report any other changes to the agenda. I'll be ready to move to approve the agenda. Black, thank you for.
So moved. Is that what you wanted?
I move that we accept the agenda.
Second to the agenda, thank you. All right. The idea that we have today.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, we didn't do the vote on that, actually.
Sorry?
You have to vote on it.
Yes, in the vote.
Thank you very much. Roberts left me this morning someplace else. All those in favor of the agenda, indicate by raising your hand.
You'll need Eric's verbal.
Thank you. Approve the agenda, thank you. Now we are gonna proceed to the new business. I'd like to indicate to our visitor that our role here is not to approve zoning on our orders changes, but simply to review the process and make recommendations.
Understood.
So the only vote that will be taken related to your item of concern will be a vote that will refer our comments to the township board. Okay, with that before us, I think it's in order for us to staff, to staff report.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt us a moment? We need to back up on the agenda a little bit.
Yes.
We have public comment and staff comment, so we need to announce public comment.
I'm so anxious, the snow is falling at a rapid rate, and.
We need to announce public comment. The phone number to call is 256-8109. If anyone is listening and wants to make public comment at this time, please call in, and if the line is busy, just try again because we have one line coming into the meeting.
Thank you. I apologize for anybody's presence, listening to us in the public. I apologize for the chills are gone, and let me now, instead of doing that, move on to the statement that I don't, anybody sees a conflict of interest. That being known, we move on to public comments. And if the public comments can be on anything that the public wants to say, but there's a limitation of three minutes, and they're not a source for discussing with the board, with the commission, just a source of information for the commission. So with that preamble, let me proceed. Any comments coming in from the phone?
Hello, this is the planning aide. Can I have your name? Ken Jackson? Okay, do I have to make a public comment now?
Yes.
Okay, hold on one moment, I'm gonna put you on speaker. Okay, go ahead, it's Mr. Ken Jackson.
Please give your name and affiliation, and we thank you for your contributing to our meeting, but you'll be confined to three minutes as you have your comments. Thank you.
Okay, my first, thank you for allowing me to speak, by the way. My first question is, is, it appears that there is some question to the actual zoning and the mill. Nobody can really find the meeting minutes when that was actually done. It was supposedly back in 2000 when Bob Coors was trying to get a golf course put in, but nobody can seem to find the minutes when it actually happened, and on the map, it is zoned R2. And it's been zoned R2 evidently incorrectly for the past 20 years. I find that hard to believe, that the zoning map was without data for 20 years, it still appears to be R2. So it would seem to be that changing 5454 to master the mill doesn't make sense, since it doesn't appear that the mill is actually zoned recreational, or as it was, if there are no minutes of that meeting actually happened. And then, secondarily, on the site plan for 5454, it shows a bike trail going through the property, and to my knowledge, this bike trail has not even been approved, let alone the past finalized. So I would think that that would need to be removed from the site plan before this approval process can go forward. The bike trail has not been approved. It is listed on there, it was brought up in the meeting at Glen Arbor, and we were told that it was not going to be discussed at that time, so, but it appears that that bike trail needs to be removed because it has not been finalized in that past, if not finalized after it was going through. And then, with the last final, the number of parking spaces proposed is 21 based on the square footage of the mill house and the mill. And based on those square footages by the requirements of zoning, 24 spaces would be required. So the number of parking spaces do not meet specification. So those are my three comments, and I would like to hear some discussion on those, as opposed to what normally happens in Glan Arbor, and they say thank you and dismiss them. So I'd like to hear what you all think about that and going forward, so thank you very much.
I welcome, I'm sorry, I forgot your, I dictated your name.
That was Mr. Jackson.
Oh, okay, thank you.
He's off the line now, so if someone else wants to comment.
I think, I think I'd like to, I appreciate your comments, and your sensitivity, and your keeping on time, but I'd like to explain the process, what our authority is here. We are simply a body that reviews and recommends. We record every comment that comes from the public, and the public comment in our minutes, we acknowledge them, but we don't necessarily enter into discussion of those comments. We try to see how we can see areas in which the Township Board's Planning Commission did not follow the proper procedures, and whether something could have done and was not done, or whatever. But when it boasts us some of those details of the dates and things like that, you might wait for a few minutes and see the staff review, and some of your concerns may be put to work. The other, the other thing that I want to make very clear, while the Township Board, or the Township Board Planning Commission, seem to be handing two items at the same time, rezoning in a special land use process, and it was not clear for an outsider what was going on. These are two different things, and this board, this commission does not review special land use requests. That's out of our authority, because that is strictly township business. Our authority is within the recommendation on changes in the zoning, or changes in our master plan, so on and so forth, of broader applicability of concern for the whole county. So I would not rule in order that any discussion that relates to the special land use at this meeting, because that's not out of our jurisdiction to be addressing. And that means a lot, a good part of staff comments, our staff is superb, and we're very thorough, I would say that the part of the staff, or the staff comments that relate to this, to special land use, will be out of order. We're just looking at the resort. Now, if that arises a question, please bear with me, because we can have discussion, free discussion during, during the meeting with the public, but we certainly can come back at the end when there is another time for public comment. Now, staff, may I, I'm talking. Now, okay. Thank you. Is any public out there that wants to come in? The phone number again is.
256-8109.
Thank, thank you. Thank you. Visitor is free to make a comment now, also at the end of the meeting, and please maintain this limitation if not possible.
Should I sit, just sit here and this is fine, or?
You must sit here, because the client who's cannot talk to you.
Hello, everyone, thank you for having me here today. So, as you know, we're here to discuss the rezoning application for the 5454 property. I guess, you know, just as a, as a bit of background for me, I am the owner of the mill property to the north of the 5454 property. We went through the site plan review process last month with the Township of Glen Arbor, and a site plan was approved for a kind of a museum and cafe use, along with a lodging component, that will be a few rental units on that property. The major goal of that site plan and the project as a whole is about preserving the asset and opening it up and giving accessibility to the public. The mill itself is such a cool old structure with a bunch of old historical, you know, milling equipment in it, I think that it's, it would be a shame to kind of close it down and not provide the public with access, so they could kind of appreciate the history of the property and kind of that structure that really was part of the founding of Glen Arbor, if you will. Going back to the rezoning application that's before you today, the goal is, again, about preservation and access. Historically, these two properties were operated together. The 5454 property includes a stable where there were horses tied up for the farmers as they were waiting for their wheat to be ground for flour. There's also an old farmhouse and an old ice house structure. The ice house stored ice that was cut from Glen Lake and Fisher Lake in the winter, so that it could be sold to residents of Glen Arbor in the summer, along with fruits and vegetables. So historically, the property really operated as one, one project, and then that's kind of a large part of why I would like to reintroduce the two under the same zoning and be able to operate them as a combined unit. Another kind of motivation for the rezoning request, I guess, would be the investment, for me, that it would take to kind of rehabilitate the ice house. And I know that, you know, economic concerns are not something that your commission takes into account, but from my perspective, the ice house is a glorified storage shed right now. I would like to see it brought back to life, and kind of, I'd like to invest some money into it to make it be a, again, a part of this, you know, history of the, of the area. And it's hard to kind of wrap my head around how putting a lot of money into an old structure like that makes sense if it's just going to be a storage shed for a property that's zoned R2. Under a recreational zoning, it could be reopened to the public in the same way that the mill house was, or the mill, rather, and, you know, it could, the history of that structure could be on display. My third kind of reason for seeking the rezoning is really just a practical one. The property is, you know, largely combined as it is. The northern side of the 5454 property is already intending to serve as parking for the mill property through a deed restriction, so a large portion of the 5454 property will already be encumbered by the, you know, future use of the mill property. Really what we're talking about is kind of combining the two so that they can all be operated as one in the, in the way they have been historically. So, and with that said, it's, you know, that's my, that's my comment, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the commission has.
Thank you, and I understand that you don't have questions.
Okay.
With that, here from staff, I think, following that, we have done an excellent review. Again, I will help us to ignore that part of the special use land use. Start.
Are we under staff comments right now on the agenda? We still have a couple things before we get to this.
You know, I'm so excited to get home. My apologies. No, the records.
I don't mean to keep that, but.
The records were showing that push as hard as I could. I thought I got away with it. Okay, we're back to staff comments.
All right, I'm just trying to check these out as we go here. So, under staff comments, I just wanted to point out that we had several emails of correspondence from individuals on this new business A item, and those have all been forwarded on to the County Planning Commission members, and will be shared with the township as well and the applicant. So we received emails from Kathleen O'Brien, Barbara Seepur, Paul Hallthorpe, Eric Elliott, and Charlotte Thar. Charlotte Thar's just came in late this afternoon, so you may not have opened up your email yet, but we sent those on to you as well, so you've got all of that correspondence, and I have a printed copy here of each of these in case you need to refer to anything today. So those will also be shared with the township as I indicated.
Yeah, I apologize.
I don't have anything else for staff comments.
Well, Trudy, did that include the comments that Eric made when he talked about coming to the zoning, a Zoom meeting?
I have Eric's comments printed out here, but since he's on Zoom.
Yes.
I'm not gonna go through his comments, so give him the opportunity to provide his comments here at the meeting.
Okay.
I do have a copy of those, but I was assuming that he wanted those read if he was not here. Is that correct, Eric?
Well, I made the comments, by the way, Mr. Booth, my name is Eric Winkelman, I'm a Glen Arbor Township resident. You can't see me because I'm technologically challenged, so that's why I'm not on the screen, but I'm in support of, of your project because the mill for years was vacant, and for, in a few more years, it probably would have become a derelict, it would have had to have been torn down. So I appreciate your investment in the mill, I also appreciate your need to create some cash flows to support the restoration process, which isn't cheap, and the restoration process, from, from my viewpoint, and my wife's, every time we come to Glen Arbor, is outstanding. It's, it's a great job, and I'm very proud of it as being a Glen Arbor Township resident. However, I do understand that there are some zoning concerns by adjacent residents, though basically the mills between M22 and the Crystal River, so, and I looked on, I looked at an overhead view of it, and I just don't see any residents that might be seriously affected by it. M22 is the main thoroughfare in and out of Glen Arbor on an east-west basis, so it's commercial, basically, and what you are proposing is a quasi-residential commercial use of the property, and I support that idea, and that's why I wrote the letter, in case I wasn't able to attend the meeting today. So if there's any questions for me, or any questions about what I wrote, I'd be happy to entertain them, otherwise I turn it back.
Eric, I appreciate your comments, but I wish that I had not made a mistake, because we were the staff comments that would have fallen upon the comment. So now on the agenda, if there's no more comments from staff, we're gonna move to the consideration of the minutes from October 27. Those were minutes prepared by staff. I have read them through, always do, I'm sure the rest of you do as well, and nobody submitted or requested for changes in the minutes, only me by adding one letter. So that being the case, I encourage a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
I move that we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you. Council, moving a, moving a motion. Is that second?
Second.
McCullough seconding the motion, any discussion? There be none. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Can we get a verbal from Eric, please?
Affirmative.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Unanimous pass. Okay, now we are on new business, and the first item was item A, and we covered that already, so now we are continuing on item A by listening from staff.
Okay, can we go through the staff report here for you? So, starting on page 10 of the agenda packet, this is a request that came to us on November 16th, so we have your 30-day review here, which comes to December 16th, to provide the review and report back to the township. The request came in to rezone approximately three acres in Glen Arbor Township along M22 and the Crystal River from residential 2 to recreational. The owners are Charles and Emily Booth, the applicant is Deputy Turner Booth, who's here with us tonight. I wanna make sure we've got this clear for you, is you have a lot of items in your agenda packet which refer to the site plan process. You are being asked to review the rezoning. By, by statute, you are not required to review a site plan. We have done some in the past because the township has asked us to, in different locations throughout the county, but you're not required to do that, you are required to review the rezoning. So there are two parcels here, if you flip ahead to page 16 of your agenda packet, these property lines are approximate. The parcel that's in the southwest corner, 006-123-010-00, is the property that is being requested to be rezoned to recreational. And then if you look just northeast of that, this property is also owned by the same owners, 006-123-019-10, that is the property that is going through the site review process right now. So that parcel is not being asked to be rezoned, and I'll go through a little bit of that in the staff report with you as we go along here. So those are the two properties, but again, it's the one in the southwest corner, that lower left corner of that page, that is up for rezoning. So going back to page 10 of your agenda packet, which is the start of the rezoning staff report, you can see in there what we pointed out for the existing land use, most of the existing land use in this area is residential. And then going on to the next page, we've noted some history here, going through the application and township minutes. So the history shows that this, the application came through to the township in September. There was not any voluntary offer of conditions in there. Many of you understand that that would be a conditional rezoning where an applicant comes forward and offers conditions that they will place on the property voluntarily. So according to the minutes, that did not happen. At the October 8th meeting, there was a motion ma, motion passed to hold a public hearing on November 5th, and then that public hearing was held, there were members of the community present, some of them supporting, some of them not supporting the project. Following that, there was a motion made to recommend approval of this rezoning from residential 2 to recreational, as completed in findings of fact document, and that has 6 to 0 by the Township Planning Commission. On the middle of that page 11, we pointed out some elements of the Township Master Plan, when it calls, we're here, does call for residential 2 of the subject property, and then we've also pointed out some of the text in here that they have in their master plan. Going down a little bit further, there was mention of this by Mr. Jackson when he called in, of whether or not this property to the northeast is actually zoned recreational. And so in the middle of page 11 there, we pointed out that we, we do not find any rezoning requests back from 2000, and we have our reports going back to the early 80s in our staff files. And then we have minutes from the County Planning Commission going back from the very beginning, when the County Planning Commission was put into organization. So we did not find an actual rezoning request in 2000 for that parcel. We did find a text amendment, seems like it was from the owners of, or the developers at Homestead, to modify the uses in the recreational district, but we did not find an actual rezoning application at that time, or staff report on it. So that is something that the township is gonna need to clear up, they're either going to need to verify that that happened and change the map so it shows recreational there, or, or they need to check their records and find out if it actually ever was rezoned, or perhaps was rezoned prior to 2000. We've noted in the, in the County's Lelandon General Plan that it does not specifically identify this subject property on our future land use maps. And then going into the other agency input, we've noted the minutes from the November 5th meeting, and the action that was taken there by the Township Planning Commission. On page 12 of the staff report, you, or, excuse me, of the agenda packet, you have our typical questions that are asked here about the rezoning. We've noted that rezoning to recreational would be consistent with the adjacent parcel to the northeast, again, not taking away from the fact that township is gonna have to confirm that. And then we've noted that development and zoning in the surrounding area is mainly residential, and that the Township Master Plan does call for residential 2 for this area, but it also contains language that may support other uses other than residential. So going down under staff comments, we kind of summarize this for you and spell out again that you are reviewing a rezoning request, not the site plan, although there's a lot of information included in here, so you can see what the applicant is trying to do with the property. And we've included that information on the bottom of page 12. Also, I wanted to just note for you, so you are aware of it, the applicant did come forward for some assistance through the Groundfield Redevelopment Authority on the northeast parcel, and we did use some assessment grant funds to do Phase 1 environmental site assessment on that property back in 2019, and I serve also as the planning, as the director for the LCBRA. Going on to the next page, we include some information on the surrounding parcels, as well as some information from the Glen Arbor Master Plan regarding historic sites, planning implications and issues, and some of that information regarding retail services in the village area. And then we finish the bottom of that page, page 13, talking about the importance of looking at rezoning a property that, when you rezone, you don't just look at the use that's being proposed, you have to look at all the uses that are permitted in the district, and are those uses that will fit into that area. Then going on to page 14, again, we include, include information here on rezoning requests, what is allowed as uses in the existing district, which is residential 2. is allowed as uses in the existing district, which is residential two, as well as the recreational district, which is the proposed district for this parcel. And then we conclude this on the bottom of page 14, basically, you know, in our review, based on the city, we put the parcel, the proximity to the river, and the existing buildings, it's unlikely that some of the uses that are listed and occur in the district, such as hospital, nursing homes, golf courses, and so forth, would be built on this property, but there are other uses that may work for this site. In the master plan, noted on page 65 of the township, they do mention an idea of perhaps eliminating the recreational district and allowing the uses as a special use of planning unit development, however, they have not eliminated that yet, and this request is for the subject parcel to be rezoned to recreational. And then on page 15, again, some more information from the master plan. In reviewing this, we felt that the township had done a thorough job of reviewing this and putting together their findings of fact to come to their determination. Also felt that the applicant had done a good job reaching out to all the agencies for their input and information, and bringing this forward for the request. It is a unique parcel, it is bound by M-22 and the Crystal River, it also has existing buildings on it, which is a little bit different than a parcel which is vacant and you ask for rezoning, and you can start from a clean slate. There are already buildings there that the applicant is trying to reuse. We did note that we would have found it helpful to have a little more verbiage in the minutes from the public hearing to determine what the public was in support of, and against, we did not see that in the minutes. Following this meeting, staff will take the staff report, the draft minutes, and any correspondence, and it will be submitted back to the township, so that they can take final action on it. And action on a rezoning is final by the township board, unless there is a petition filed by citizens wanting to take it to both the township voters, and that's all spelled out in the planning acts. And then finally, we have that map that we put together for you on page 16, and then everything else, the appendix, everything that came from the township included for your review.
Now, how do we handle the comments that came by email after the date of application of this?
We're going to include all those and make sure they get back to the township.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. And we all received copies already. If not aware of it, we send you in mailbox now.
I'm worried.
Okay. At this time, first questions that we may have for staff, but no discussion yet. Anything you need in the form of clarity on the work that the staff has done? There being no questions?
No, I didn't say that.
Command you, or commend you, this is a question for staff on their report, not for the things in the report, of what the staff has summarized.
Victor?
Yes, Miller?
Our question, if, how do we resolve this year 2000 action that may or may not have happened, because it's not recorded? I mean...
We don't, we don't resolve that. That is going to be a township issue. They're going to have to look back through their minutes and through their files to determine when that property was rezoned and what records they have on it. We were told it's around 2000, so that we looked in those years just leading up to 2000 and after that to try to find the rezoning, and could not find it. We did find a text amendment, though modifying the uses in the recreational district. So it's up to the township to go back and look at their records and find out when that property was rezoned.
Okay, because it seems, it seems odd to rezone a portion to match something that we're not sure whether it in fact exists that way.
I believe your point is good, but also believe that what our staff has done properly is to alert the township, hey, you slipped up here. And this is one issue. Okay. And we all agree with peace with the staff report. Thank you, Trudy, Gail, whoever else was in the pod, for the excellent work that you continue to be doing. Not that I'm supporting it or disagreeing with it or agreeing with it, you just do great work. Now, at this time, I will entertain comments on the commissioners. I'm working on the assumption that you have seen the documents, and that you want to bring a concern as a result of the documents, on focusing strictly on our bylaws. As they say, all we do is make recommendations on proposed township plans, and/or rezoning or text amendments. That is in our bylaws. We are not to say, I like it, I dislike it. This is not our job. Our job is to take the work of the township, review it, ensure it's in concert with expected reforms as for in the Michigan zoning and enabling act, and that there was not any omission on what happened. An example, I jumped again, gone, because I noted as well. Staff noted that there were no records of the public comments during the hearing. That suffice to understand this extent of the public comments. And I concur without comment, wholeheartedly. So this is kind of feedback we're to give. Okay? Are we together? Okay. Without preamble, Frank, anything you want to say?
Well, I don't know exactly what took place, it probably happened before my time initially, but...
No way.
Well, I think so. But to me, when they're making an improvement, it's sad that they haven't kept better records, and they can't go back and find the motions that were made and support it back, however many, however long that was. It's sad that they don't have better records.
Thank you. McCullough?
Having read the document, my only comment is that if he has weddings and he has a parking lot and it's right next to the river, that would have, for me, if I were there, I wouldn't be particularly fond of that, but that's just a personal opinion. You know? You have a parking lot right next to the river, fluids can leak, all kinds of things can happen, and it's a pristine river, and I'd like to see it kept that way.
Thank you. Carlson?
No comment.
Any comments? Nixon, upper right. Nixon, any comments?
You're on mute.
I'm on, I'm live now, excuse me. Yeah, I do have a couple of comments. It's hard for me to add much more than what was offered by staff. I think what staff has done is really commendable, in terms of analyzing the essence of the proposal we have here. But I'd like to highlight a couple of things that Trudy referenced, but also things that, reading through that concerned me. I think, number one, there seems to be frustration expressed in several different ways by citizens in opposition to this suggestion or this proposal. And I think it would warrant that the, before the board makes a decision, that they really seek clarity on the public comments, and perhaps even ask the planning commission to review the opinions that have been expressed. Now, this is a major proposal for Glen Arbor, and reading all the documents that you provided us led me to believe that some people are not well-informed, and that's not unusual, but it seems those who have taken the time to express that in writing are confused with the process, not feeling like they're being heard or not understanding. And so I think number one for me would be that I'd recommend the township board at least go back and clarify those opinions and look at those comments again. Secondly, I would add my interest in seeing that maybe they need to give some serious considerations eliminating the recreational district. It doesn't seem to sound like it has any use in the township, and perhaps would be best removed from the ordinance. And certainly, we've already mentioned it a couple of times, but there really needs to be a way to resolve that rezoning question in 2000. Those would be my remarks right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Nixon. Miller, any comments? Yeah. Any comments?
Yeah, I was just taking it off mute, I'm sorry. Again, I would ask that the portion of the property that may or may not have been rezoned in 2000, that rezoning this portion without investigating the other would make no, has no logic to it. But you can't use the whole thing as recreation unless the whole thing is zoned that way.
Thank you.
That has to be, that would need to be resolved. And then there's the, whether it's appropriate to rezone any of its recreation when there's residential, when it's been residential so long and people were able to construct houses, expecting it to be adjacent to residential, but that's a different point.
Thank you. Miller, Yoder, any comments?
I guess, I compare with Nixon, I guess, as far as adding much to what staff has put there, I think they did a thorough job reviewing this and laid it out very well. Yes, I have, you know, reading through it and everything, I did find a concern that in the minutes, there was a record of public comment on impact with the public, so I guess, if you may, I'm sure if you kind of date that, then I thought staff did a wonderful job in comparing with what they've put down.
Thank you. Hubble, comments?
I don't have anything additional, addition, in addition to any, what everywhere else has added.
Thank you. Lotner, any comments?
Um, yes, thank you. I just want to say that I appreciate the difficult position that the board is going to have in dealing with this, considering the sensitivity of the project. I think it was well presented, staff did a great job, I really have nothing against staff comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lotner. I think that is... Noonan. Is that Noonan?
No comment.
Okay. And the stepchild town place, Winkelman, where are you?
I'm not visible, but I'm, I can hear you. Sounds like a line from a movie. The email that I sent to all of you, I believe, yesterday, I'm wondering if that could be included with the information we send back to Glen Arbor Township. Please understand that Glen Arbor Township is basically a resort and tourist community. That's the economic pillars of what we do. What is planned for the mill, I believe, is very compatible with what we already are doing in Glen Arbor. And if you drive by the mill, the mill is to the north of you, and immediately north of the mill is the Crystal River. So it's on a very narrow piece of land, relative to anything else that's going on. So, my feeling is I would support that we pass the information along with our comments, but somebody has to make that motion. I know I'm premature in terms of suggesting that. Thank you.
Winkelman, I ask you for my, I ask you to forgive me, but I keep on insisting to you, we don't comment whether we like things or not. We don't comment about the goodies goodies. We, at this time, don't even comment on special land use. If you want to have the letter incorporated, you can make a motion, but from what my perspective, it's completely out of the context of what we should be addressing right now.
I'll let somebody else make the motion, because obviously, I'm somewhat subjective in terms of my viewpoint on this project.
There being nobody speaking, I'm assuming that we should go on. Am I correct?
Right.
Okay.
Do you have a motion?
Not yet. I want to be sure that we have the opening for anything else. If you want to, I'm going to speak one more time, so you're sure you're still at peace. Peace? 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 Your office at peace. Are you in peace, Miller?
I'm sorry, is there a motion on the table? And if there is, can somebody please read it back to me?
There's no motion on the table. We want to make one, you can do it. Otherwise, we move on. Nixon, peace? Oh, sorry, Miller, yeah?
I'm fine.
Yoder, in peace? Yoder, are you in peace? Hubble, are you peaceful?
Good.
Peace? Lotner, are you in peace?
Mr. Chairman, I have to apologize, because it's breaking up some. Are you, a clarification, are you asking for a motion, or are you just going to do...
I want to, Winkelman wanted to make a motion by one of us, that expresses the comments that he had, they were, from my, from the chair's perspective, unrelated to the topic we're now discussing. The commissioner can come at the end of the meeting and commission the comments, and then at the time, move anything he wants.
And I understood where Mr. Winkelman's comments were, that it seemed to fit what is going on in Glen Arbor, I understood that. Right now, are we going to forward staff comments as usual, or are you looking for something else?
We're reviewing staff comments, and we made comments, we're ready for the motion to transfer the document, including that ahead. That's a motion we should be having. But I wanted to honor Winkelman's desire.
Are you speaking to me, Mr. Chairman?
If you want to talk, yes, I can see you.
No, I, I think I've said everything, and I've written everything that I believe is necessary. I think to move forward with a motion to send this back to Glen Arbor Township would be appropriate, I think it would be more appropriate if somebody else makes a motion besides me. Thank you.
Gotcha.
With the assumption they were all at peace, I'm not at peace myself right now. This one is going to go into the record books, with histories of bad sharing. So at this time, I do my best, but I am now entertaining a motion of passing staff comments, which, as we heard, we, so many of us reinforced them, was a concern with the public comments of the public hearing, or the hearings may not be recorded, the concern also, some of the records that were incorrectly not found in the files of the township. I think those were the two primary concerns that were identified and related and accepted by us all. So a motion to pass the staff comments, and the comments of the commissioners would be in order. A third moving, Black seconding. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your hands.
Thank you, babe.
I have to say "I" because you can't see me.
Thank you, thank you, I keep forgetting, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about that, Eric. I apologize. Okay, now we should take a breath of fresh air, as we move and change directions, and we look at the item that we inserted in the agenda, nominations for the, 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 the possibilities of just the nominations to the voter commissioners, or the replacement for those that are not to be yet voted. I want to read party of the... I want to read part of, part of our bylaws, which we, in essence, the Planning Commission shall be, shall consist of 11 members. All members of the Planning Commission shall be appointed by the county voter commissioners in accordance with the Michigan Planning and NBA Act, blah, 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 and preferably based on recom, and preferably based on recommendations from the County Planning Commission. Appointments shall be done, notice the shall, not should, according to section 102 adopted by the Board of Commissioners as follows. One seat for transportation, one seat for business and business, one seat for economic development, one for education, one for finance, finance, one for recreation, one for legal and real estate, one for agriculture, one for tourism, one for municipal government, and one, one seat that represents the county board of commissioners. So at this time, we have received, and you have this in your mail that you received separately, though an indication of those that will be willing to serve in the possible category, and those names are Sean Walter, David Behrens, Steve Christensen, Don Bericks, Melina Lotner is appointed, Casey Noonan, John Popa.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, that's, you're not reading from the planning commission file? I'm not sure.
Don't they have this?
Yes, but you're not reading from the planning commission file.
Oh. I'm going to system there.
If I may clarify, there are only four positions which are coming up for either a new appointment or reappointment for this year.
Okay.
And those, you should have, it's under the planning commission, they're highlighted in yellow, so the, the terms held by Mr. Goldschmidt, Mr. McCullough, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Winkelman. So this was sent to me by the administrator's office with the applications that are on file, and you can review and send a recommendation to the county board if you have a recommendation on any or all of these, or you can let the county board know that you've reviewed them, but you don't have a specific recommendation. And County Commissioner Lotner has her hand up right now, so they want to take comment from her.
We did, we all received the list of those that were?
I emailed them all out to everyone.
Email, yeah, okay.
Do you want to call on Commissioner Lotner? She may be able to add to what I just said or point something else out.
Sorry.
Commissioner Lotner is ready to speak.
Yes, Lotner.
Thank you. Um, I, I have a question, and Trudy may be able to answer this. Trudy, of the four applicants that are up for reappointment, are they all eligible for reappointment?
Um, you have, is a three-term limit, correct? So I think each of them are going to have to clarify with me, and I'll have all my memory serves, but Victor, I think you've already served your three terms.
Yeah.
Is that correct? David McCullough, have you served three terms?
I came on in 214, so would I have served three terms or two?
You would have served three. And we can, we can verify this with Laurel, with Laurel Evans in the administrator's office when she's back in. She's, she ran in this week.
I, I can, I can tell you what I've got.
Okay.
I've got Victor being appointed in '09, Winkelman in '15, Miller in '18, and McCullough in '12. But are these two-year terms? Yes, that's what I don't.
I think the limitation is, is you can serve three, three-year terms in a row, and then you have to leave the planning commission. That's what it's been in the past.
Okay. Well, that, that was, I didn't know if they were two-year terms.
Yeah, they are standard terms, Melina. I'm trying to look that up right now and see if I can grab it.
Okay.
I, I have another three years left. I've already served six.
What, where was that? I started, I started.
And then, of course, we have Victor on in the education, and transportation, Miller with economic development, and McCullough in business. So, um, um, you know, I, I guess that would be my recommendations with the board of commissioners is that if we are allowed to have, you to serve, that would be my recommendation, and go from there. If, if one cannot, then we have, um, we have four to choose from, other than Mr. Black, who is already on for one more year. In applicants. So that's just my thought.
One of the concerns I have, and I don't know which, what we should be doing now, unless we get specific instructions from the board. One of the concerns I have is the, the, I see a measurable benefit if we could have representation in this commission from the townships and villages. If I were a king, I would say we have 11 townships, and each one with a planning commission, that they would assign one of their members to be here. Staff does not like that.
It's not that I don't like it, Victor. I'm shaking my head no, because that's the way that it used to be. The county put in place a new county planning commission ordinance several years ago. It went through all the steps we recommended, and according to the act, the public act, we selected the categories that we felt were important in Lumina County. The county board approved those categories, and that's how appointments are now made. They're no longer made by where you live.
So we have to approach this process backwards, call for nominations in this category, tourism category, and then make recommendations of which one is the most suitable for that category. This is what we have done by de facto, but we don't have enough indications from the individual saying, but really they would want to be covered in which area. We don't want this, there's definitely.
I, I, I do find that we are, we are, you all are, so from what I can see is that perhaps Mr. Goldschmidt would be the only one who has served his three terms.
So I'm not eligible to continue. So we have to find something from the education area to fill that gap.
It would be that seat, correct?
And in the past, the county board in some situations has not made an appointment and instead gone out, um, adds again to let people know that a particular position on this board or another board is, is available. And I also wanted to point out that all of the applications that you have here today, right now, all of these individuals already serve on at least one board or committee for the county. There isn't anyone in here who is not serving right now, so just keep that in mind. And if you don't come to a recommendation tonight, you can let the county board know that as well, that you reviewed it, but you didn't have a specific recommendation.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Are all the people that are going on still willing to serve, including you?
I'm willing to serve, but apparently I may not be able to serve.
Yeah, but they might make an exception for you.
Well, I'm willing to serve.
Okay, so. And I'm willing to serve, and I don't, the other two members.
They, they submitted, they all submitted non-applications.
So they're all willing to serve?
Yeah.
Mr. Nixon has his.
Oh, sorry, Nixon. Yes. Talk, Nixon.
I would move that we recommend the appointments and reappointments of Mr. Goldschmidt, Mr. McCullough, Mr. Miller, and Mr. Winkelman.
Support. Motion is made and supported. Any discussion?
There'll be none, let's take, let's take a vote. Those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Those opposed, say, raise your hand with something. I, I, I appreciate that. I'm not, can I abstain? I abstain.
No.
You don't have to, it's passed anyways.
Yeah. I don't have to.
Cannot abstain.
According to your bylaws, you're not supposed to abstain.
I cannot abstain?
No. According to the bylaws, I said you're not supposed to abstain.
I know that. I was in the voting. No.
So the motion passes 10 to 1 with Victor opposed, is that correct? Just so we have the right amendments. Okay, thank you.
Cameron.
Yes?
Chairman. The personal concern of your abstaining is that one would believe you're not interested in serving on this commission any longer. And I think I heard you say you were, and I think I heard, or also read your application expressing an interest of serving. Can you explain to me why you would abstain?
I voted no because I don't want it to sound self-clerving.
Well, that might be the case of all those who are also running for candidacy.
But I prefer to abstain.
Okay. I, I respect that. Disappointed, I will share with you, I'm disappointed that you would make that statement, but I respect that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I think you should withdraw your abstain and vote yes, because as he said, when you get to the commissioners, they're going to think your abstention means that you don't want to serve.
I'll honor, I'll honor Nixon and McCullough's suggestion. Can we now, can I recite of something, affect something that, in a motion that I acted on?
I'm not an expert on Roberts rules.
Roberts rules say that you can, you can amend this motion or withdraw it and vote in favor of it, if you would like to do that.
I amend, I would amend the motion to allow the, the negative vote to be yes.
Support. Any discussion?
I'm pleased to hear that.
Very, very devout. All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Thank you, Tom Winkelman. All right. We are there, and now we are stepping into the committees. No, no, now we're not talking about goals. You know, we, we've had an interesting day today. I came a little bit unjoyed, things at home, demands, and I, I don't feel that I'm serving you properly. And I wanted us to have a time that we will engage our, our left, our left brains, our right brains a little bit, and to see what do we want to truly accomplish. We're just living in a responsive mode. We're not initiating much. And we have the capital CIP that we have, that's very important, and there we can exert some creativity, but it's, it's still in response. Maybe we should be just a responsive board. So this is what I'm hoping that we could have, a discussion of that, thinking of what do we want from January on forward. And so as we, as we prepare for the January meeting, think ahead for that, for that meeting time, so we can have certain, hey, I wish we could, back to that, and we energize ourselves. Is that okay? We all okay? Are we all okay up there? Okay. So that being the case, let's move on to the agenda. Educational Committee. Yoder?
Nothing to report at this time.
Housing, thank you. Housing Action Committee, Lotner?
Absolutely nothing to report tonight.
Thank you. Parks and Rec, Noonan?
We did not meet this month, so no report.
Thank you. Any attendance at meetings at Township Village, anything you want to report? Black? McCullough?
No.
Carson? Carson?
Stacey.
Nixon? Miller? Hubble? Lotner? Noonan? Yoder?
I have, I have something. I, I'm on the Empire Township Board, and a couple months ago, the village of Empire requested a drain for South Bar, a drainage district, and it's something that we all as a township board are navigating through because we, we have no control over it, but it's going to severely affect many residents within the township, and we have no control. And now that the ball is rolling, we're, we're just trying to get a handle on how everything is, is working, and of course, Steve Christensen obviously knows about it, and he's, he's been working on it, and engineers have been notified and everything. And now that the ball is rolling, it, it's a ball that really can't be stopped. And it's, it's just interesting that it affects many township residents, not just village residents, and the township doesn't have any control over how it all works or how it's assessed, or what they come up with as far as people paying for it, and there'll be many township residents that live nowhere near South Bar that will be footing the bill for some of this. So it's just, it's interesting, it's still being worked on, there's, you know, there's, there's a long ways to go before it's done, but it's a project that could cost a lot of money and costs people that really have nothing to do with South Bar, a lot of money.
Thank you. Seems like something to stay awake at night for.
Yeah, it's just, just something that we, you know, we never really, none of us had really ever handled one or knew how one worked or anything, and then, and I don't, I don't know if some of the village council members even really understood at all, they just wanted a fix for the drain, or basically the outlet of South Bar, which we, has been an issue forever, basically. Lake, Lake Michigan pushes sand into the mouth of the river, and they go down there with a backhoe and dig it out every few weeks, and it's fine. And sometimes they can make it a couple months without having to do it, but it's, it's been very common lately with the high water levels to have to go down there often and open it up. But now we're, we're under the, we've got this ball rolling here, and it's a lot to handle.
Did I cover everybody? Winkelman, have you been on?
In our, in our.
County Township?
Have nothing to report.
Okay. That being the case, Communications, notice from Castle Township. This is staff update for us, if something is coming.
It's just something to keep you aware of as they start their planning process.
Can we still celebrate Christmas? Can we still celebrate Christmas, or will we get another epistle of this size again?
You're not going to get it for a while.
Okay. All right. Okay. Public comments, at this time, we will pause for a second, give the chance for anybody in the public that's been with us so far. If you have been with us so far, we appreciate your tenacity, and you may then call, and we'll honor you for three minutes.
Phone number is 231-256-8109 for public comment.
And you may then call and we'll honor you for three minutes.
Phone number is two three one two five six eight one zero nine for public comment.
And we thank you for the, those that are still with us in Zoom. And we appreciate your following our business. And I personally would encourage you, any recommendations of how I could be doing things better. And I appreciate all this improvement. Thank you. We are now then to staff comments.
Nothing further. Planning meeting. Hold on, let me put you on speaker, okay? Can you give your name, please, and state your comment?
Sure. My name is Paula Jackson.
Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I just wanted to make a comment to Mr. Winkelman's comment about commercial down M 22. And actually, there are several homes along M 22, none of which are commercial. There isn't any commercial business outside Glen Arbor Village proper.
Okay, is that the end of your, is that the end of your comment? Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you. Just to remind the public, all your comments will be recorded and be in the files. Pause again in case if someone, somebody else, they wants to jump from public comments. I think I should cover it. Oh, no.
Hello, let me put you on speaker just a moment. Okay, please state your name and your comment.
My son Kathleen King O'Brien. I previously sent in materials, but I also wanted to participate in the public comment. And first and foremost, I want to thank the planning commission for all of its efforts, including staff notes and all of the work that was done. In addition, I would highly recommend that.
Kathleen?
Yes.
Can you turn down the volume on your computer? We're getting the feedback comment, please.
I don't want to say sorry.
And then go ahead and complete your comment. Thanks.
Okay. Yes. Right, I just, I just did turn it down now.
Kathleen? Okay, you're responding to the feedback on the, on the, on the computer. Can you just turn the sound off on your computer so we don't hear that at all in the phone? And then I'm going to put you back on speaker on our phone here when you tell me that that's done. Does that make sense? Yes. Okay, hold on one moment. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I apologize for that technical difficulty. I had no idea what was going on. So just to repeat a little bit, I wanted to thank the planning commission, the staff for all the comments, all the effort that was put in, the professionalism of the entire commission that has been evidenced this evening. And I also previously sent in a memory and documents, but I think that Glen Arbor Township needs to go back and review this entire situation because I don't think it was done properly first go around and the public has not been taken seriously. There are many people who are participating in this commission meeting right now who are residents in the area and various of their property will be severely compromised by this development if there is not a stop mechanism to allow input by the public going forward. And with regards to the development, I understand the situation about the mill that's still need to be relocked as well. And I also think that perhaps the Glen Arbor Township should very strongly consider whether recreational zoning should even exist in the township at all since it has such a limited use in its historical perspective. And also the fact that it may not even be suitable for Glen Arbor in the height. I also think that there are mechanisms, special use permits, et cetera, that could be rough around for the future with regards to development in Glen Arbor. I also think that the village of Glen Arbor needs all the business it can get and there are many businesses in Glen Arbor that are not solid at this time and have been suffering for some time. So to, for commerce outside of the village is something that may not be in the best interest of Glen Arbor Township. And again, I thank you for your comment. I apologize if you might take a little bit longer.
Thank you.
We thank all the public for the comments and we will wait a little bit more now. My apologies, my apologies in Washington. So we will wait two minutes, giving a chance for anybody else to jump in.
Where are we on the agenda? Are we at Commissioner comments?
We are in public comments. Waiting for public comments.
Hello, just a moment, I'll put you on speaker. Please give your name and your comment.
Yeah, my name is Ken Jackson. I'm calling back again. I wanted to make sure that everybody understood on the commission here that there were multiple people that stood up in the Glen Arbor meeting that were voicing concerns about this. I know that the meeting did not reflect that, but there were many, many people who had comments and concerns about this. So I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware that there were, that there were comments. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, any public comments? Let me again, give you two, two minutes for anybody who wants to jump in.
Where are we on the agenda, Mr. Chairman?
We're waiting for public comments, Mr. Winkelman.
Still public comment? Okay.
I declare a closure with the public comments and I see a hand in Lottner wanting to say something.
Are we down to adjourn?
She wanted to know if you're ready to adjourn, but you, I don't know, you have got Commissioner and Chairperson comments yet.
We have, now on the agenda, staff comments.
We have nothing further.
Now we want Commissioner comments. Jumping rapidly, Commissioners, any comment?
Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas, Lottner.
Hi, Jim.
Comments? Commissioners?
Yes, I, I would like to make an additional comment about the mill. This was a grist mill. It's of historic value. It's positioned on a narrow piece of land between M 22, Crystal River. Across the Crystal River is the Homestead, which already has a recreational zoning designation. So it would be, it would be in compliance or in concert with that designation. The homes along M 22 are far apart. They came after the grist mill. This is a historic structure. The Booth family have made major renovation commitments, both in terms of the labor and the dollars to recreate and to save these historic buildings. Therefore, the fact that they want to create some cash flow out of it, I don't have a problem with it. Also, there is limitations as to how many people could actually stay in that house. And there's limitations on the number of parking spaces that would be available based upon the design of the land. M 22 is the main thoroughfare. So while these people on M 22 are complaining about traffic and other things, the traffic's already going by their houses, especially when it's fudgy season. That's defined between May 1st and just before hunting season. So this is a compatible use, compatible with the county in terms of reusing facilities like Myers-Kimmerly Park. We've made a commitment to at least support the, the renovation of that barn. And this is a renovation that's being done by private citizen. True, they might have gone to the Brownfield redevelopment, but other private citizens have also done that. So I'm in favor of what the Booth family is doing. And by the way, I've been in Glen Arbor for well over 30 years. And every time something comes up, there's always opposition. It's a given. There's always somebody that's going to be ticked off about something because the last big thing was the sign. And we had these old guys, stick-in-the-mud people that didn't want to have our electronics sign out in front of the township hall. Well, now people have to do it manually. Hopefully that will change before the summer season opens up and we become unmasked by then. So again, the mill makes a lot of sense. The rezoning makes a lot of sense. And that's all I have to say about that. Oh yeah, one final thing. Happy Thanksgiving to everybody. And Victor, could you or Trudy indicate if we're going to have a December meeting? Thank you.
Let's, let's continue with, I believe we have another person's public comment.
Okay, could you put, state your name and give your public comment?
Eric Elliott. I'm a immediate neighbor of, of the mill. And we have, we applaud Mr. Booth for doing what he's doing. We understand he's, he's a businessman and he wants to return on his investment. We get that. Having said that, we have a concern as immediate neighbors. You know, it, it kind of feels like, you know, the same plan was approved without any limitation or restrictions. Nothing was offered to neighbors. You know, we're fearful of this becoming a wedding reception venue, music, liquor, no limit on hours. That's on the mill itself. As far as the rezoning goes, I just don't understand. Mr. Booth has offered no plan for that piece of property. And at this point, it doesn't seem to make sense to rezone it if there's no plan. I know he has parking plan for the parcel. And he mentioned something about rehabbing the ice house. But to give him the wide open, wide open flexibility of what recreational zoning would allow seems irresponsible, especially for that, that piece of property. Riverfront, flat lands, very natural. And furthermore, you know, if Mr. Booth decides to sell this piece of property in five years, 10 years, what's next owner going to do? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to be sure that we have everybody at rest, I'm going to wait another two minutes and then after that, the meeting will adjourn. There is two minutes for public comments to come in. Then we adjourn.
Hello, let me put you on speaker. Follow, please give your name and your public comment. Go ahead.
Hey, this is Christina Maron. And I'm calling just to address a couple of concerns I have with Mr. Winkelman's comments about this project. I'd like to say that there is a lot of interest in all developments. And I want to commend Turner Booth, who I happen to know personally, for all of the hard work and creativity he's put into the project. Clearly, there is a win for Mr. Booth and Glen Arbor. I think there is concern however, how the township is handling this approval process from a procedural perspective. The, the rule about county planning commission would really, I think, be viewed as a hero in the eyes of township residents. If they were to take a look at the process and procedure of the very respectful and thoughtful public comment that's come to bear on the process, which has largely been ignored by the Glen Arbor Township Planning Committee. What causes this matter is that there is a confluence of many important developments happening right around the mill. And that has to do with other things that are matters for another time, but heritage trail path that has not been approved by the public that Mr. Booth's site plan has a lot of core. And I think given that and given the disregard for residents community of the area, there is concern. Just on the matter of points that Mr. Winkelman has raised, I hear your passion, Mr. Winkelman. I think that it is fair to say that Glen Arbor businesses belong in the central business district in Glen Arbor. We have a resort that has questionable revenue problems on one end. The resort is not sole recreational in its entirety. There is a small portion that is recreational. The portion that is immediately adjacent to the mill is in fact R 5 and not recreational. And that is if the zoning map is to be believed because that same map calls the mill R 2. So there is clearly a lot that has to be rectified there. You know, I think to, to say that Glen Arbor is solely a tourism town is really not giving credence to the concerns of residents that live there full time and part time. So I would ask the planning commissioners, can we take a look at what's going on in Glen Arbor to be sure that the people feel that they are being heard on all of this? Clearly, we applaud the mill and what Turner Booth is doing. It is a hero's journey and we're all rooting for him. But I think that a, a, a successful conclusion will include the input and the concerns of those who've chosen to make a life in Glen Arbor and actually live there on a day-to-day basis. And thank you all for your service and for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to make, make you aware, your, your comments are going to be recorded, but we do not discuss them at this time. And also the issues before us was the zoning ordinance amendment.
Did I offer an additional comment? Because some people have made some comments regarding some of the things I've said. They need to understand that all we're doing is sending back what we've done. We've made no decisions with respect to any zoning. And I would encourage those people who either are for or against or upset with any of my comments, that it's now time to go to the township board. That is where any of your efforts will be recognized. I do not plan to attend that meeting. Therefore, you don't have to worry about me being a factor. They will have a copy of my comments and everybody else's comments. And therefore, the people who make public comments regarding the redevelopment of the grist mill, the historic grist mill, they are encouraged to show up at Glen Arbor Township meeting as it concerns this agenda item. Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to jump in here just real quickly. We are still getting public comments, so I would just ask for the record if we could get through our public comment first and then if there's more comment from the, from the commissioners, we do that before we adjourn. So I have another public comment. Hold on, please. Okay, please state your name and your public comment.
No?
Yes.
Joy Taylor.
Go ahead, Joy.
Okay. Booth, there are not the technical things that you probably want to hear, but there's some facts I had, and I'd like to just get them on shit tape while I try to keep it short. But I, I lived in Glen Arbor most of my life. I've lived here since 1969, 18 years. And it's hard to prove, it's called Friends of Glen Arbor, which was very hard to believe that you're right there. which was very hard to believe at the time. But it's 18 years of that for. With major development of the old mill, although they're beautiful, very proud of it, and nice plant. And there's a hatchet and changed grass in the river with water, plant life, fish, and other wildlife. They're all surrounding environments that have people. We should be trying very hard to preserve the Crystal River, not changing. Look at Glen Arbor. And a biking, running hiking trail called the Heritage Trail goes through all of our front yards and homes and across the driveways. It is really needed. It is really necessary. All of this concerns me greatly, and it should all of us. Our small town in Glen Arbor is running a little too much to fast. If we are careful, we will see that another gathering that is making us a political problem in Glen Arbor. The Crystal River is one of the most fifteen rivers in our country. We should be doing all we can to keep it that way. Interesting that the river was named Crystal, which means clear, colorless glass, the clear quality, unspoiled region. Without top priority, to preserve one of the most fifteen rivers or the most beautiful, unique areas of our country. I wish here to develop or to reserve. There are perhaps attending with women, women by cell or whatever. If a girl is a great place to live and living here year-round and a proud dear, some of the ways our families here. And that's a quote, a quote by John Adams. Turn to the end of his regiment and step away and then you can be back very much alone. Very disappointed, very frustrated by the time. So he asked himself aloud, "Is anybody there? Does anybody care?" Thank you.
Thank you.
If you ask for your help.
Thank you, Booth.
Thank you. At this time, we will again, based on fairness, have two more minutes for any more public comments. And if they come, please be brief, be brief. We appreciate that. The phone number you can call is?
231-256-8109 for public comment.
I can go for two years on a cold, and all of a sudden they get one. Last two days, three maybe. That's all I have. Cut it off. Two minutes.
That's good, Victor.
Speed it up.
Okay, we are now at the back to the agenda. We had backed up because we had backed up because a phone call came in, and we want to do honor that. We were at the point of the Commissioner comments, and then the Chairperson comments was next. I have no comments but to thank you for your patience tonight and thank the public for showing their interest and being, feeling free to express your different perspectives. We live in a beautiful, beautiful county, and it takes all of us to maintain it and also to make it also attractive and businesslike. With that, no more comments. Thank you very much. And a blessed Thanksgiving to all of us.
Thank you.
Adjourn.